I'd like to call the continuation of the October 10th, 2022 public hearing to order on November 3rd, 2022 at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium and then in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Judy, will you please call room?
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Spellman.
Here.
And the audience is ultimate Engelman and trustees Augustine.
Correct. Thank you. Perfect. As this is a continuation of the public hearing, I will keep my comments brief. The only new item that's come up since the last public hearing is that the Medina Planning Commission heard the proposed map amendment from B one to the R one district along Bellis Road and the planning commission recommended that we not proceed with that one. So they recommend that we maintain it as B one.
On their basis of?
The future land use map showing that area as being neighborhood commercial. Is that the only argument they had? So at this time, if any members of the public would like to come speak, you're welcome to do so. Just please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Rushworth, 1006 Bellis Road. And we wanted to kind of reiterate something that we had sent to the planning commission for their meeting yesterday. And kind of also you all have received an email from Richard Pearl going into some of the the history of of that area of the township and to kind of kind of just as a thought that, you know, the intentions that somebody had 30 or 50 years ago really isn't the same intentions that we have today. You know, even looking at the the survey from the master plan, things that that seemed like a good idea that that they'd put in the master plan in 2015 when when they sent out the survey, you know, people are really focused more on maintaining the rural characteristic of the township than development. And if you look elsewhere in the master plan, even there, there's that map that they point to. But there's also, you know, Richard had highlighted some of the expansion and the Greenway acquisition to link the Metro Park here up to the Emerald Necklace. So, you know, looking at one piece of information about the land use map, they kind of ignored some of the other parts of the master plan where it really is looking to to keep that as a rural area that that would be, you know, saved for the future for the park. You know, and as we said in the meeting before, this really isn't a traditional business district like you would think of a district. That may have been the intention that they had originally when they zoned it, but that's that's not what happened. And, you know, it's a park area and it's a residential area. The, you know, the resident, the other parcels in question that have remained residences, it doesn't become businesses, even though they were zoned for B one. You know, the the future use those owners have in mind probably could be addressed by the permitted uses, you know, home based businesses that are allowed in residential areas and keeping that kind of a use that would be consistent and harmonious with the neighborhood surrounding it. The the planning commission kind of highlighted that the they would be the Buzzard Cove would be a legal nonconforming use if they were changed to residential, almost seeming to imply that wasn't the case today, but it is, you know, all of the research, nobody's been able to produce a conditional use permit. The when we've emailed Tom, we've got, you know, his decision that he sent us was it's a legal nonconforming use for outdoor recreation. So there's really not a change in making it residential and it's a legal nonconforming use versus it's a business that's currently a legal nonconforming use. And part of the point of it is to empower the BZI to be able to protect the health and safety of the neighbors in the surrounding community. That if, you know, if they want to change their use or, you know, grow their business a lot more, that protection should be put in place to make sure there aren't projectiles flying into yards, lights, you know, glaring out onto the roadway right at the stop sign, music blaring across the valley. That was about that, you know, like I said, that was information we provided to the planning council as well, but wanted to make sure that y'all took it into consideration when their, you know, their concerns seem like they can be addressed through other means and that this is a good way of protecting the health and safety of the neighborhood without having to, you know, have individual little business zones with specific uses that are defining what's harmonious in that particular area. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have what she provided?
No, she did not send it to me. It went directly to Medina Planning Services. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Julie Mainzer, 1727 Hinckley Hills Road. My coming up here again is also to address the health and safety. And actually, I would like to request that you guys as a zoning commission implement zoning regulations that are legal and enforceable that protect the health and safety of the adjacent neighbors and the citizens, community members that use the surrounding area of Buzzard Cove. I believe that Buzzard Cove's driving range portion violates the section 4.8 that the nuisance are prohibited. The golf balls are very dangerous and have caused personal injury and property damage. And I have some additional pictures to submit. This was a personal injury. This net that the golf ball came through is still a net that was never repaired. This is another picture. Golf ball came over, another crack in our siding. This is another picture. This is my daughter's car. The whole back window was shattered out of the car. Here's another picture, sorry, a big dent in the top of a vehicle. And these, and then this is just where the ball hit a downspout and it put a big dent in there and you can see the dimples of the golf ball in that. The roof is a mess, all the vents, everything. I mean, if you go and look, it's quite destructive. And it's it's going to end up causing some severe damages and potentially death. This is not taken seriously. So to continue, I believe that okay, so here. Buzzard Cove is allowed to operate in existing hazardous business and every golf ball that enters our property or the surrounding properties is threatening physical violence and property damage. Physical injuries could be life threatening. They are administered to the public health, welfare and safety. And I also would like to encourage you to please contact your or inquire with the local police department because there are numerous police reports on file. One police officer that was on the property filling out a report at one point said that maybe we should even wear hard hats when out on our property. I mean, I could go over the numbers. We it's it's quite substantial how many golf balls we get. It is more this year than we've ever had, even though they did repair some of the upper nets, lower nets were never addressed. They're still basically rotten where golf balls can go through them when hit by a lawnmower. We've tried to personally address the lawn service to ask them to please not cut with them angled in our direction, but, you know, they get changeover, whatever, we cannot go supervise who they hire out to have do their yard work. We physically have to go out numerous times a week, pick up the golf balls, you know, so we're in a hazard too, going out there just to collect the hazards. Every time we pull in our driveway to get out to carrying groceries, I mean, what if we get hit? You know, what's going to happen? How's that going to affect us? There are people that walk up and down the road to go to the parks. I mean, you guys live in the community, you know, I'm sure you've seen people walking their dogs going to the park, people ride their bikes up and down the road. Cars, vehicles, anybody could be hit. We've I've contacted, I've called over there when we've had, you know, a large quantity. There was one that was across the street. There's some in the ditch. I've called over there several times. I talked to probably Owen or Tommy, whatever the manager on duty was. I've had them come over to our property, point out where they're coming. I mean, they're all over the place. I mean, it's 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 mind blowing to 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 really get a feel that the technology in golfing has advanced so much that the height of the nets right now is an injustice to any kind of, you know, potential safety. It's it's a ruse. So the the balls, the golf clubs, everything can easily go over that net. So potentially the the driving range is not suitable for that area due to the fact that they cannot keep their golf balls safely on their own property. And they are really burdening us and the community as our safety is, you know, potentially at risk every time we're outside.
Spencer.
Yes.
Thank you for that. You know, I want to make sure that this meeting is not a meeting to look at Buzzards Cove and whether Buzzards Cove should or shouldn't be doing something with the preliminary site. This is not a site plan review. But but I think that your point is well taken in the sense that, you know, when you have a business district this close to residential properties, there are potential issues, noise we've heard about, light we've heard about, and safety we've heard about. And I think that those are very valid points. The one question I do have for you is when you spoke last meeting, I think that you were advocating for maintaining this as a business district. And so our our, the purpose of this public hearing is really to hear the comments about whether this should or shouldn't be a public of a business district and why that is the case. And so I'd like to
Right.
understand.
Okay.
Still.
My point is, yes, I'm still for it to remain business, but I'm also saying, I think this is a great opportunity for you to now understand the hardships and the health and safety concerns and the severe hazards and the nuisance to also take that opportunity to implement and clean up some regulations, put some stuff into our zoning that that's going to ensure moving forward that people aren't going to be killed. You know, just carrying in the groceries. I mean, I this is, it's it just gets worse every year. It gets worse every year. The technology has advanced so much and they're not maintaining any kind of upgrades to safety which are which are going to protect us. And even if the zoning map does change, that's not going to help us. So I'm just saying this gives you guys an opportunity to make a difference.
Thank you. Just wanted to note for the record, Inspector Wilson has now joined us as well. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is John Kalas. I live at 1809 Ridge Road. So I've been here to a couple of these and kind of checked out the zoning meetings. Has it ever? Has it ever like officially been announced why we're looking to rezone this?
I think that that's part of the discussion that we've had over three months as to looking at why we would like to reason. We've started three months, three or four months ago with this process to looking at this district and what we would like to see with this district. And over time, it morphed into maybe the best suited use for this district is a residential district. So that was on every one of the agendas that we've published. So.
So so is it because of the comprehensive plan? Is that the idea? Or we're just, you know, we're kind of updating things to look like the future land use map? Or is is that kind of what sparked it?
So I think, I don't know if you came in late, but I will say
Yes, today.
Future land use map says that this should be business. So it's not the future land use map. There are going to be other points of the comprehensive plan that we'll discuss during our regular meeting after this that we can consider as well.
Okay.
But there's other motivations as well. You know, we're hearing health, safety concerns. We're hearing light pollution concerns. We're hearing noise concerns. So this is a 17 or 16 acre block of land
Okay.
between the six parcels, three of which have homes on them. So those three are all legally nonconforming right now. So those are some of the motivations that have led us, among other things, again, these were lengthy discussions to bring us to this point.
Okay, so the Metro Parks was out here last week or two weeks ago or whatever. And I raised this question at the trustees meeting the other day. And looking at some of the Metro Parks documents and looking at the future land use map, I noticed, and then back up to the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of talk about the Greenways path. And when Brian Zimmerman from Metro Parks was here, I was kind of asking him about that and what the plan was with tying in the Greenways path. When you look at the future land use map, that Greenways path goes right through the area that's looking to be rezoned. Is that factoring in at all with the rezoning?
Really? No. And, you know, I can't speak to what everyone is considering in their mind, but what I will say is that, you know, we as a zoning commission shouldn't change something to basically change, cause a change of value that encourages the Metro Parks or discourages the Metro Parks or encourages some other government agency or discourages it. That really shouldn't be a factor in what we we look at. Now, we can look at the comprehensive plan and say, you know, look, we want to maintain a lot of vegetation in this space. And so what allows us to maintain that vegetation? What sort of zoning does it require? Does it require a limited amount of buildable space on a lot? Does it is residential more suited for the protection of that property? What's most suitable for the protection? If that's what we're seeking, an environmentally sensitive area.
Is that what we're doing? Is that what we're seeking?
I think that that's a relevant consideration.
Okay, so it does factor in. And the idea that it would be zoned possibly to residential. It would affect, it wouldn't make it more inexpensive for someone like the Metro Parks to come in and acquire that. Would you agree with that or disagree?
I I couldn't tell you. I'm not a realtor. I couldn't say whether having Buzzards Cove as commercial makes it more valuable or having it as a residential makes it more valuable. I can't say whether each of the other individual sub lots are more valuable or less valuable as residential versus business. I can't make that judgment.
Could the Metro Parks come in and purchase it as business and turn it into something like that? They could essentially, right, and do an extension of the park or, right, as business, they can do that. So so it is possible. Let's say that residential, the property was worth less money. I mean, we were in here and we talked about the way the river comes through and and how it's not feasible to develop that land. There's really not a whole lot that can be done there because of how far it has to be off the street, I believe, and the actual developable land wouldn't be very much. Because, you know, I kind of, I've been watching, I've been watching the moves the Metro Park has been making. I'm very familiar with the Irish Town Ben project. That's called like the Vision of the Valley project in Cleveland. And and this stuff kind of tends to have a theme. They used OHM to do that project. They used Arthur Schmidt actually was in on that project as well. One of the things that they did use there, they used the Port Authority to pay for a study to be done on that hillside to come in and deem that hillside unsafe. Because they were able to do that, they were able to use eminent domain to take over a lot of that area there. And then they use a lot of nonprofits to come in and sweep and pick up the remaining property in order to turn it into a park. When they were here the other day, they were talking about the condition of Hinckley Lake. We talked about the flood plain. We talked about all those other things. I don't want to say that it was neglected, but what when they speak about how hard it is for them to get the grant money to go through and dredge the lake and take care of it, maybe that it's even overdue, that they're looking at doing it in two years. It's going to be very difficult for them to get the kind of money that it takes. Is there any way that this is in such kind of bad shape that they could just kind of wave their hand and be like, well, yeah, yeah, this this is environmentally unsound and we can kind of come in here and we can do the same thing. We can claim eminent domain and and make something happen there.
I can't provide a legal.
I mean, this is just the way that I'm looking at it. I think that I think that there's much broader scale as to what's being discussed in this room. There's more people that are focused on Hinckley than I think that we realize. And these are things that are on my radar. And when I hear the zoning meetings and I come here and and we're just trying to get a feel for what to do with that area. And there's people that whose property is considered, you know, to be rezoned or whatever that necessarily don't didn't ask for it or nobody petitioned you to have it done. It just makes me kind of curious. That's all as to what could be going on down there. So that's all. I just wanted to raise that, that it's on my radar and, you know, it should be on everyone's radar, I think.
I just want to make sure you're you're not either indicating a support for or against it. You're just providing this information. Is that?
What I like to know is nothing, things happen, okay? There's the things that happen on the surface and there's the things that happen underneath. And that goes everywhere. I think that's the nature of business. If you kind of tip people off as to what your business idea is, someone's going to beat you to the punch, right? I think that now people are using federal grants and they're using a lot of money that they have to to make a lot of things happen that wouldn't have been possible prior to COVID. There's a lot of money that has been released. There's a lot of municipalities and townships that are struggling. There's a lot of people that can't pay for their roads. So they end up having to go and I don't want to say beg for money, but ask for money. And a lot of times these grants and these things that happen, they come with a lot of strings attached. So I I guess I'm watching the big picture. I'm trying to make sense out of it in my head because there's a lot of different entities that are part of it. When you hear the Metro Parks discuss it, they talk about the EPA, they talk about Nawaka, they talk about whatever bunch of other, you know, environmental or other agencies that that can be involved in this kind of stuff. And I just like to keep tabs and have an understanding as what people say they're going to do and what their intentions are, are absolutely truthful. You know, I don't necessarily. I like the truth and I like to talk and speak in the truth. And I think everybody deserves that. So that's all I guess I'm asking for out of anyone is is to just be upfront and then people can make honest decisions on on what is that we're looking at. So that's all.
Sure. Did you have a question, Mr.?
I just wanted to comment that I I do not and have not, nor do I believe the board, but I can't answer them. I've acted as a shill for the Cleveland Metro Parks.
Act as a shill?
We have not in any way, shape or form.
I'm not accusing anyone of that.
I did say that. I just made a general statement, but we have no way, shape or form. I can't obfuscate everybody independent, but as a board, we have not and personally I have not.
You know, I made the comments to at the Metro Parks meeting. I just watched a lot of their projects go. Okay. And I know that it's really, it's a really, really bad place to be to be critical of the Metro Parks. You don't look good. They've got a sterling reputation. They turned to Edgewater Park, which was not the greatest. They turned it into amazing place. Same thing with the 55th Street Pier, the stuff that they want to do off of 72nd Street by putting the island in and all this stuff. They're really doing amazing things. So it's not a good look to say, hey, look out for the Metro Park. I'm not necessarily saying that. What I'm saying is the Metro Parks could be a Trojan horse in a lot of ways. City Council, Cleveland City Council is already working their way into the into the horse, right, to kind of kind of make some things happen in Cleveland. And I don't know, you you they've done some questionable things that I've been party to. And I've watched the reaction from people that are affected by this stuff. And my main concern is, you know, people that have that again, that's going to be affected by or that are going to be affected by it when they raise their concerns or they speak up against it because it's against the Metro Parks or it's it's framed in that fashion. Those people are shouted down and their opinions are disregarded. So that's what I mean when I say it. I mean, they wanted to take over off of like Edgewater. They wanted to turn everyone's front yard into a bike lane. Okay, put like eight to 10 foot wide bike paths to replace the sidewalk. Well, will they let e-bikes on those bike lanes? So now you have people doing like 25 miles an hour on these bike paths as you're trying to pull in and out of your driveway, right? That's really unsafe, but they kept pushing for it. And only when the residents gave a lot of backlash, did they finally back off. But the way it was covered in the media, the residents, they were selfish and then they sicked a bunch of young people on them to call them selfish and and stuff like that. So the more truth that's out there, the more opinions that we can encourage to to really get a public opinion, I think the better. That's all. It's a lot. I apologize for being so lengthy, but.
No, I appreciate your straightforwardness, but I think as a board, we've done a good job of remaining neutral and trying to get everyone's insight on this decision. I mean, it has been discussed for over four months. And, you know, if you were present at any of the meetings, we did discuss it. We're not hiding anything. We're not.
And I don't want to seem like I'm accusing anybody. I really, I really don't. I don't want to seem that way. So I apologize if I cross that way. Not my intention.
But I think I think we are trying to be straightforward.
Okay.
And we are, you know, everything is on board as to what we are doing. It's not, there's no Trojan horse here.
Not you, not you, Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. There's a lot of Trojan horses that exist in Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. So.
Mr. Spellman, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quick. So first, don't apologize. It's what's public hearings. Keep an opportunity with public to get up and speak their piece on it. I think, Marcus, you gave a pretty good explanation of how we got here. I think probably pertinent to that as well is we sat down months ago to look at all the various uses within business districts. This being a business district and we have us having two of them, there's a lot of uses. So we sat down and looking at that to say, okay, if this was to remain a business district, you know, what kind of uses would we like to have there as well as in the downtown area as well as the other business districts? And in that conversation, the thought was thrown out that, you know, perhaps, how did we get to a business district in this area? And perhaps there is other other zoning districts that, you know, we'd like to see in that area. We've answered around a number of different types of uses and things that we'd like to see in there. And so it's kind of all just evolved to that. But, you know, in in terms of any, you know, I don't want to say conspiracy theory. I don't want to dismiss your your comments there, but, you know, some of the stuff that you said there, it's it's valid. It's a good perspective, but.
I've watched it happen. Like, like, you know, conspiracy theory or not, like, I've literally paid very close attention and I watched it happen in other places. And that's why I feel comfortable bringing it here, you know, it's not some unfounded stuff. It's there. You can you can check it out.
No, absolutely. So it's it's but appreciate the comments, you know, appreciate the inputs here. So don't, please don't apologize.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? No. While we were here, go ahead.
Richard Pearl, King Road. As a resident, I agree with, I don't see her now. There you about the comments about maybe the zoning, looking at the nuisance definition about projectiles crossing people's properties, whether they're bullets or golf balls. And I'm done on that. But I'm here tonight as a spokesperson for 350 Hinckley. 350 Hinckley sent a email to Chair.
It's been distributed.
Pardon?
It's been distributed.
And I'm glad it was distributed. I hope you had a chance to read it. I only wanted to provide some background for the six pieces of property. And I hope that you're not discouraged by the vote at the Planning Commission last night. That that is a recommendation and they look only at the land use map, which seems to be talked about a lot lately. And I think Mr. Kalish might want to look at the Metro Parks. I think it's a 2016 master plan for Hinckley Reservation, and that may relax it a little bit, what what he's talking about. And I guess my final thing is I would like that email to be put into the public record.
As it was distributed, it will be entered into the.
Thank you.
Thank you. To that end, while we were here, I received two additional emails, both from people that were present in the audience. Because I have not distributed those to the rest of the members before the public hearings, I do not intend to enter those into the public record. Both of you had your comments. I just want to make sure that what you.
I have a copy. Can I just enter it now?
You can read it if you like, because I these, the rest of the commission and I have myself not had an opportunity to read it. And this, we're about to close the public hearing. So that's why if you want to make any more comments, make them now because I'm not going to enter.
I basically read it and I give it to Judy so she has a copy of what I said.
Okay. But it will not be, it will not be part of the attachment. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Well, I read it.
Perfect.
So if I read it and.
That will be. Yes.
Does that go into the record?
Yes. What you said up there is it will be entered into the record.
I read it.
Perfect.
And then I'm going to give Judy a copy of it. So I would like it entered as a record.
Perfect.
Are there any other public comments? No. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing at seven P M. Can I get him?
So moved.
Moved by Manley.
Second.
Seconded by Spellman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is adjourned. We'll take a five minute recess and resume our regular meeting at seven oh five P M.